Second.
Hello, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the first item on my agenda is a public hearing for a definitive subdivision plan modification. Colonel Mansfield's stakes, 55 Colonel Mansfield Drive, in honor of the Hoffmans.
Hello.
Introduce yourself and tell us what you're looking to do.
Bill Aronberger, I'm here tonight with Craig Hoffman, his wife Valerie, who are going to build a house, and his parents Richie and Helen Hoffman.
Yeah.
And I'm here with Paul Marabito from Ross Engineering, who's just coming in right now. And just by, before I turn over the floor, just by a brief way of history of, I mean, where we are procedurally, is last night we closed meetings with Conservation Commission for both. And at the next meeting, they're going to set their order conditions, and they're also going to vote the stormwater permit. The town's consulting engineer, Amory Associates, has signed off on the stormwater, and they're in agreement on that. I think you've received copies of other things which Karen was kind enough to send to me from some of the other layers of boards. I understand the fire chief has a hydrant going in, which Paul will get in, and the tee thing. He thinks that meets health and safety standards and just, and again, since December, since the informal meeting, it's been a little while since then, but Craig and his wife and the young son is very excited to be moving in here. It's a great opportunity to live next to your parents. Most times, young people don't get a chance to do that. And one of the things which I'll just say at the outset, because I don't know if it was in the actual application, is the intent here, because of the waivers that were having, is that this would be limited to building lots, and it would never be anything more than that, because I think we could demonstrate you could build additional building lots here. But that's not the intent. They just want to have a lot for Richie and Helen, and for Craig and Valerie. So at this point, Paul, I'll turn over you.
Thank you. My name is Paul Marabito from Ross Engineering Company, representing the owner and applicant for the project. Craig Hoffman, the applicant, and Richard and Helen Hoffman, the owners. You recall, we did meet informally in December, and the amended subdivision plan I filed with the board falls in line with everything we talked about at that meeting. This first sheet is the existing conditions plan showing the existing five-point-to-three acre parcel of land, an existing home in this location occupied by Richard and Helen Hoffman. To the west, there's an area of border vegetated weather on the site, and we show the 15-100-foot buffer zone. The access to the existing house is off the very end of Colonel Mansfield Drive. We're asking the board for its approval to create the cul-de-sac for the purpose of providing legal frontage for Lot 1, the existing house, and the proposed home on Lot 2. The Colonel Mansfield Drive subdivision was accepted in 1974. I believe it was constructed in the early '70s. This next sheet shows the topographic in the utility plan. The grading in this area here is for the onsite septic system, reviewed by the Board of Health. Also, this is the proposed home in this area here. The access to it would be from the driveway at the end of the cul-de-sac. There's underground electric coming from this pole to the house, through the underground water service and gas, all underground utilities to the proposed home. Within the cul-de-sac, there's a proposed hammerhead that would service the emergency vehicles. Also, the areas you see in blue are recharge infiltrators to accept the roof runoff. There's also an infiltrator berm up here as well, which is all part of the stormwater management system that was part of the stormwater improvement, which Bill mentioned the Conservation Commission addressed last night. As part of the improvements in the cul-de-sac, I did meet with the fire chief. He did send you a letter. He's in favor of the hammerhead, but he asked that we extend the water main if needed and install a proposed fire hydrant in this location. That's so, in either word, we were 500 feet of the existing house, and the plan has been revised to show that. I also met with the Board of Health. They had a public hearing to review the subdivision, and they were in favor of it. They simply stated that we have to be serviced by a septic system, which it is. This sheet here, the plan sheet, this is a sheet that we added. This sheet shows various details in addition to the three or four that were on the original submission. All of these details are in response to the fire chief's comments about a fire hydrant. We show a trench detail and hydrant detail, and we also show details for the stormwater system that was asked for by the review consultant, Amory Associates, in reviewing it. The stormwater permit again was reviewed, and we expect that to be issued along with the order conditions in the next 14 to 21 days. In my cover letter, I've also asked for a series of waivers that would fall in line with the proposed improvements we're asking. Again, we're simply asking that you approve that later on the cul-de-sac and the hammerhead within the circle, as well as the proposed hydrant. Everything else is outside of the cul-de-sac area. The area you see in green is the area that we proposed to be the entry. So, the entry is part of the stormwater permit, because it acts as a filtering agent for the stormwater that's ultimately end up in this area here. When we did the stormwater, we did look at the entire site. We had to do that when we were doing stormwater calculations. So, that permit we filed for, and the commission does take into account the entire lot. I think with that, I'll end my presentation. Answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. Laura, comments?
This is a small subdivision, because it's only, you know, creating one additional lot. It's a little bit complicated by the fact that this lot was part of a subdivision that was approved a long time ago. And before this lot could be approved as a buildable lot, it had to obtain a variance from the zoning board. When that variance was obtained, one of the conditions was that there was supposed to be a cul-de-sac at the end of the road here, and that condition was never carried out. It's, I think, kind of awkward at this point to create that cul-de-sac, because the whole property is owned by, you know, one individual, and it just is, yeah, I think it would be difficult to impose that on them. On the other hand, the Traffic Rules Committee looked at this, and that is something that they really, that they said that they wanted. Today, at the, I would say, the 11th hour, late afternoon, we received an envelope in the mailbox that had a memo from the Department of Traffic Rules saying that, in spite of what she had said earlier, she now was saying that the cul-de-sac was not going to be something that they were going to push for. So, it's a little hard to read sometimes and to read between the lines, and why would someone kind of change their mind at the last minute? But in any case, that's the memo that came out, and it's something I think you just have to consider, whether you want to go with that or look into it further and see if there's any other opinion there, or what you really want to do as far as a cul-de-sac relative to this lot, anyway. The cul-de-sac, I think, would benefit the people living in the development. On the other hand, it kind of takes a chunk out of this property. So, the only thing that I think is maybe the final, you know, point on it is that when you're creating two lots, you are doing something that's a little different from what the variance originally envisioned. So, you know, that's another thing to think about. Another thing that the planning board may want to look at with this is that where the stormwater was something that, in this case, fell under the Conservation Commission because of the stormwater bylaw, the planning board typically looks at stormwater when you're looking at a subdivision. And if there is any impact on the existing road, I think the planning board doesn't really have that information to, you know, really evaluate that. So, you might want to, you know, get the drainage calculations. It shouldn't be a big deal, because a lot of drainage information has been put together on this property already, and just see how that, you know, how that shakes out. So, I think the cul-de-sac is a little bit of a conundrum, but when you look at the reality that a second lot is being created here, you know, that should factor into your thinking on it. I'm not sure, you know, what your decision is going to be, but I think that should definitely factor into your thinking on it. And as far as the stormwater, I think it may be something that, you know, should really be taken a look at. So, those are two of the main concerns here. I think one of the thing that should be clarified is that there's a green area that goes all the way over to the hammerhead, and in fact, that's going to be drawn back somewhat to the left of the hammerhead, because there's an underground utility line that has to go through there, so that, you know, that can't stay green space. And there is, I believe, going to be some green area between the two houses that can be saved, which would be nice in case these houses at some point in the future are not owned by members of the same family. I mean, when it's all the same family, it's great. You know, you probably want to see each other all the time, maybe, depending. But once, you know, maybe you want to, you know, sell a lot at some point in time, I think it would be really nice to have the privacy and to have the two lots, you know, kind of kept separate.
That's it?
Yep.
Once you answer the questions, Bill, then we'll go to the board.
First thing, at the outset of this, Laura's reference to a variance, and I think it's irrelevant. And the reason it's irrelevant is there was a, under the town bylaw, the zoning board back in 1970 could issue a permit for anyone who had a 70, for 50 feet of frontage, which this has, okay? And one of the prior predecessors to the Hoffmans got such a thing, all right? The special permit lapsed. They didn't build a house until 10 feet later. I mean, until 10 years later. And so, any house they built was built based on a building permit that the Building Commission issued at the time. So, that analysis isn't there, but nevertheless, what we're doing here is providing for fire safety and whatever other safety which we have, so I think we adequately address that to start with. As far as, the fire chief has weighed in on this, and my understanding, and Paul Marabito, I haven't had a personal conversation with Dottie Cook, is that they are, particularly when unbeknownst to any of us, the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee met, and we weren't present at that, but I think Paul can speak to that. And basically, there was no information from the fire department. Subsequent to that, a letter from the fire chief and a fire lieutenant went in and there. And my understanding is that they didn't have any comment, and everything was copesthetic, if the fire department was copesthetic, particularly in light of the situation with the hydrant and the other things. So, I think those issues are adequately addressed from that standpoint. From, under the stormwater aspect of this, and this has been kind of an ongoing thing for three or four months here, the regulations say that the, so you know, the duplication of things, is that the Conservation Commission, and again, in the application, when that was made, it very clearly indicated that they were doing the stormwater. The town, Craig and his wife, pay for Amory consultants. They have approved the plan. As a matter of fact, there were several modifications they wanted, all of which were adhered to. And they said, yes, we've satisfied everything you can. So, I'm a little confused as to why, and my understanding, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, the stormwater system not only covers the lot, it also covers any of the cul-de-sac and hammerhead, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, the entire, any construction locus, wherever incorporates the entire thing. So, there's no, there's no area here that the stormwater hasn't been addressed, and there was no stormwater at all going into the municipal system. It's all contained on site. And the town's own consultant has certified that and put it in writing. So, I think, I think from the Hoffman's standpoint, and from the conservation, and from the town's own consultant's standpoint, that's all pretty clear on how you had it. The other thing which is more minor matter that you mentioned, I would disagree, and again, maybe it's semantics on green space and whatever, but if you dig an underground utility line and you cover it over, that's still green space. This isn't a top thing. Actually, if you give them the COHACID's bylaws, they specifically, which would be a good thing for the situates bylaws, specifically anticipate that, you know, green space, yeah, you can have subterranean things within green space, so. But I think that's neither hand or the other. The long and short of it is the town's consulting engineers have approved this and, you know, are comfortable with it.
Good. Thank you. Questions on the board? Steve?
Just so I'm clear, and maybe you have the answer to this or not, but you said there was a requirement that this cul-de-sac get built as part of the original subdivision plan, and it wasn't built because of?
It wasn't part of the subdivision. It was part of, as I understand, a variance that was given for this lot to be a buildable lot.
Okay. And is this the variance you're talking about that lapsed?
Yeah, it wasn't a variance. It's a special permit.
It was a special permit.
Okay. I mean, we have documents. It was a variance.
Well, no. What the form is, if you look at that, the town, the notice of, the notice of it actually says variance, the form. If you actually look at the decision, that's there, but nevertheless, it lapses anyhow. But it was not part of subdivision control. This Colonel Mansfield Road was accepted as a town way before any of this occurred. So, it has nothing to do with subdivision control.
Yeah, it's not to do with subdivision control. It's to do with the zoning and the zoning board appeals, and it's something that they imposed, you know, before this lot could be built on. This cul-de-sac was supposed to be constructed, and it's, you know, who knows why it was never constructed, or who dropped the ball, or what should have happened, but...
But we're saying that the requirement to construct it was a function of the special permit that lapsed, and so it no longer was in place. Is that right?
Correct.
Well, I don't know if you could say that it lapsed. I mean, how...
Everything lapsed in two years. It's not exercised, and it was two predecessors entitled. The Hoffmans were even unaware of.
So, the house wasn't built within two years of when the special permit was issued?
You built the house in 1980, Richie?
Correct, 81.
Yeah, 81. Special permit, I think in 72 or something.
Well, then, maybe it was built without any zoning relief, because, I mean, if you needed to get zoning relief, it would seem like you would still need to get zoning relief when you came in later.
Well, I, we can speculate. That's why we have 48 Section 6. When a building permit's issued, there's a six-year statute of limitations, so that people, people don't ask you 50 years later.
I think it timed out. I mean, I can't imagine why the cul-de-sac was never put there in the first place, but that's...
This sounds like it's a sort of a moot point at this point.
Oh, absolutely.
Sure. Because theoretically, if that did go in, it would all, one of, just to speculate, if a cul-de-sac did go in, you could have built an additional three houses there. So, in all likelihood, someone said to the predecessor, hey, second thoughts, that it's not a good idea. Don't do that, or you're going to have a five-acre parcel with four houses there.
And is this, are these two parcels limited in terms of additional development? In other words, they couldn't be subdivided?
That's a condition that we'd agree to, is that there's only two building lots, and it could not be further subdivided. And that's, and that's when we came in informally, because to be frank with you, Craig and his wife, his parents are helping them with the land here, but, you know, this is their first house they're going to do, and whatever. And the reality is, we showed, and we demonstrated kind of by plans, is this is why we need the waivers. This is why we understand the importance, for health and safety purposes, of complying with the fire chief things. But this is what we need to do, because if we can't do this, and that's before we went out and spent $30,000 in engineering, and why we wanted to get some consensus on this, is otherwise, you'd have to build at least one more or two more houses here, which isn't the intent, because, hey, the Hoffins just want this for their and their family. And at the time, when this went in also, I know recently at a town meeting, they approved the Damon property, which is great for the town, but this is potential access to the Damon property also at the time when we were sitting here in December.
I just want to say about the question that was raised to what the statement that I made about the green space. It's not green space that's being identified. It's a tree line.
It's a tree line, right.
You know, it's being discussed.
That's what it looks like in the drawing, anyway, is a tree line.
Yeah, presumably, it's all green, except for the pavement area of the house.
Right. Make it up. You put utilities, and it goes back to whatever it was.
Exactly.
And the underground utilities in response to...
But does it go back to trees?
Well, it will in 50 years.
Yeah, then there won't be any utilities there.
Yeah, the underground utilities in response to when we, since as the board, as they said, they would have liked to seen that. So, that's what we did.
No, I think that's good. It's just you won't tree over that once you put the underground utilities in, because that will screw up the utilities.
Exactly.
I don't really have any other questions.
Robert?
Yeah, a couple of things. On the sort of flow of surface water and all that, I'm hearing that from the southern property line where the cul-de-sac is going to start, everything flows back towards the wetlands. There's nothing flowing to the south. It's all moving north. Is that, is that what your calculation showed, Paul?
These are the existing contours here.
Yep.
So, everything's flowing in this direction here.
Okay.
The water coming off the pavement in the cul-de-sac is going to flow into this area here. This is the bioretention area. It'll come down here, go around through here, and then eventually into here. The rest of the site, this will be infiltrated from the roof here. This is a, this is a filter berm for water coming in this direction, and the rest of the water will be supplied up in the wetland.
Okay.
There is nothing going into these two catch basins. Everything from the road is coming into this area.
So, nothing's going offsite? That isn't going offsite now?
That's correct. The goal of the stormwater is that you don't have an increase in volume.
Right, understood.
You decide, and that's from that.
Okay. So, it seems to me that satisfies my curiosity on the stormwater issue. If the Conservation Commission approves it, there's no other impact that we can discern that they haven't already dealt with. You know, and as far as the cul-de-sac, I was concerned too when I heard that, because it seems to me that if it had been part of the original subdivision of the Colonel Mansfield subdivision, the cost would have been shared by the developer and passed along to each homeowner in the subdivision in some way. It seemed a little extreme that one property owner would have to bear the cost in engineering and construction of the cul-de-sac, but I'm personally satisfied that the fire department approves this layout. I don't see that you need to ask for much more. So, that's it.
Paul?
No, a lot of it's, a lot of it's been covered about, again, that stormwater berm. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I remember going down there in December just to, you know, satisfy my own curiosity. The majority of the existing property, that's all treat anyway. I mean, there's, you know, it's open up to the house kind of, but behind that berm is already existing trees and woods that are going to help mitigate that stormwater. And then my only other question is, is how far back is the next hydrant or the previous hydrant? I know we have to kind of move the, and again, I know there's some stone wall there and...
It's 79, this, this is the bound here. It's 79 feet from the bound.
Okay. So, this is going to be a little work to get that down there.
Well, there's a water main coming up here.
Okay, all right.
We checked with the water department. They got an eight-inch transside pipe. It stops in this area. So, we have, so we'll probably extend it a length or two and put the hydrant here and then take the water service up.
And that was my only question, is when they were building it, way back when, how far did they bring that? Okay, so that's...
Yeah, this is the last item here.
Yeah. But again, I mean, you drive down there, it's the end of the street. There's really not, not a lot to, call a lot of attention to it back there. It's, it all makes sense.
On the water, Paul, while you're, while you're talking about that, is there any concern that the system is dead-ended as opposed to looped? And is that the case?
No, because, no. The reason is, is that the only thing we're doing is that we're going to start a water service from the existing main into the house.
The existing main is not looped, then?
Right.
Okay.
There's a question as to whether or not we should do flow tests. If we're doing a full-blown subdivision, we would do one. But the water department did get back and say you don't need to do one for a water service.
Okay. And the fire department didn't ask for one at the new hydrant location?
No.
Any questions? I'm still astonished that the cul-de-sac was never put in here, just to have a road that just dead-ends, just doesn't seem right, but...
Well, that was under the original subdivision approval, because I think, at least in that era, Bill?
Just for the record, it was not mine. I wasn't here.
No. Even before your time?
Before my time.
You're a short comms guy.
Well, then, that would have just been horse and buggy.
Right, right, exactly.
Horse and buggy, and I think the Indians were in the upper quadrant.
I would, I would say you have to look out for the Tyrannosaurus.
If you look at almost any subdivision in the '60s and '70s that was down in the town of Situate, these are all over the place, and the reason they're all over the place is they were all for potential and expansion when they did it, and they didn't want to design or pay for that until that happened. You can go through, whether it's Old Forge Road, if it's Indian Trail, Bull Rush Farm, all of those have the exact same situation.
They're all the same relative type.
Right.
Yeah.
Different board.
That is, I grew up on Penfield Road, and there's, and there's three or four same situations.
Yep.
Do I have no further questions? What we should do is probably go through the waivers. Sean?
I was just...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I make a comment or a couple of comments?
Soon as you explain who you are.
Sean Harris from 26 Rachel Road, not anything to do with being a selectman. For those of you that don't know the Hoffmans, I've known them probably my whole adult life, not socially, but professionally. And I just listened into all the discussion. I just, what really comes to the surface more than anything. First of all, it's five acres. I'm not a builder or developer, but I own a couple of houses. Maybe they could get four or five houses, as it was mentioned. They're looking to do one. And I'm not just saying this because Richie and Craig are sitting here, but anything they do, they do right. And I think having a hydrant, looking at Richie's house, they're not going to go clear cut all five acres. They're going to clear what they have to, leave it green, underground utilities. I don't know if I'd want to be doing that. It's more expensive, but when it's done, it's going to be done right. I just, for those of you who don't know them, that's what they do. They do it right, so I just want that to be...
The Hoffmans want to reput that. Thank you, Sean. Any other from the public? Any other comments? Let's just walk through the most, most of the waivers.
You want me to read? We haven't discussed them yet.
I was going to say, why don't we discuss them, and then we can have a motion, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I think the first one would be required sheets.
Okay, so there, the ones that they are asking to be waived would be the landscape plan, erosion and sedimentation control, and easement plan. And it says details, but you seem to have a detail sheet there. I don't know if you added that later.
We did.
So, you don't want to waive the detail. You don't want to waive the detail sheet.
That's correct.
Did the Conservation Commission not want to see an erosion and sedimentation control plan?
Yes, that's all part of the stormwater.
Oh, it is. So, there is one in existence, and it's been approved by the Consco. Okay.
Has the Concom actually approved it? I thought somebody said...
No, they closed, they closed the hearing. They hadn't written the orders.
The orders of condition. The orders of condition, right.
First, they're going to sign the orders.
So maybe if they have it, they don't need to waive it, because you could just include it with a subdivision?
Say again?
Is that fair?
Correct.
I'm just asking if you already have it, and it's something that the subdivision rules and regulations want anyway, maybe it could just be tucked into the subdivision plan?
It is, I sent you, I sent you copies of the revised plan.
Yeah, the submission to revise plan.
Okay, we just got that around like 2:00 this afternoon.
What I said was that, that supplemental, I mean, that, that's the middle of the debate includes sheet five, which is the detail sheet.
Okay, and it has an erosion and sedimentation control plan too?
Yes.
Okay. Landscape plan? Landscape plan?
Now, we have to waiver on that, that's, I'm finished, two of the waivers, I'm sorry, that's the fourth one.
So there wasn't a landscape plan at the Concom?
No.
With the file? I'm confused, what are we, what are we asking for a waiver on versus not?
The waivers were from the first submission, the, the way, we do not have an updated waiver unless to, to match the plan of submission today.
This one we just got.
So that's what you're kind of, you guys are kind of doing as we're going along, trying to, trying to make, trying to make it fit.
So the list of waivers that's on this letter dated February 12th, which is the list that everybody's working off of?
Yes.
That's not right anymore?
It is still right.
It's still right, okay. So I guess, does everyone have this letter, February 12th?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yes.
Maybe we should just go down that and, you know, check them off as we go.
Okay, so six, six, you don't?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh, I was just going to, so 632 isn't really what you have on here, because you're not just providing those plans, you are also providing the erosion and sedimentation control, the detail sheet, the easement plan?
That, that's part of the stormwater permit, that, that's all required in your stormwater permit, is provisions for erosion and sedimentation control, or during construction and after construction, and that was addressed in the stormwater application.
Is, is there a plan of those things showing, you know, the different areas where there's going to be?
Yes, there is, yes, there is.
Okay.
So we don't need to waive that then, is what we're saying?
I don't think so, but I'm not sure in the hearing.
Point of the submission, Paul?
Pardon?
Is the point of the submission a submission or not?
No, all, all of those details are in the stormwater permit, because the work being done in that permit is all relative to the, the hammerhead in the house, in the septic system, and that's the application that addresses erosion and sedimentation control during and after construction.
So, so, if I'm, correct me if I'm, if I'm correct, Paul, we are asking for the waiver, and the reason we're asking for the waiver is because all that information is, is contained in the stormwater permit filing.
That's correct.
Correct, but not in the subdivision control file.
That's correct.
I guess one of the things I'm just taking note of is that the planning board, I'm not sure if we ever did receive the application for the stormwater permit, or whatever plans you have for the stormwater permit, so we really haven't seen any of that.
Well, your, your reason you didn't receive it is because, is because there is no stormwater that's going on here, in that the Conservation Commission is the stormwater permitting authority, and, and I believe I saw an email with a conservation agent in the month of February clarifying that.
Let me, let me suggest-
Well, let me leave that up to the board, what they want to-
Yeah, let me suggest that, that what you do is you take a copy of that filing and that information and just forward it over to the planning board.
Absolutely.
That way that we've got, we've got a copy of it in that, because I think it's part of the, the thing is, is we, we, we have two people that would normally look at stormwater, in this case, because of the efficiencies, one group is looking at it.
Exactly.
Right.
And I, and I think, and I think one of the, one of the answers, the answer is, Bill, yes, we'll do that, I think part of it is though, is because the actual town's consultant, literally up until yesterday, was asking for revisions, which finally got him to his 100% comfort level, and that's why it wasn't like this is something that was sitting there for two weeks that didn't get over here, so literally-
And, and, and I'm not suggesting that it is, but I think, it's one of the things that we talked about when we came back up and rewrote the stormwater, was to make sure that we're, for single entity looked at it, that information was shared.
Okay.
So if you come back and, and that, forward that over, I think that would obviate-
And you can do that, Paul, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that'll obviate a great deal.
So I'm clear, are you, are you looking for the plans, the stormwater plans?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, so that takes us, 6.3.2 required sheets? Okay, so I guess you're looking to provide, this is what you're going to, you want a waiver to provide it, not to provide anything other than to cover the layout, the topo, the utility and the grading plan.
No, we're providing the details, right?
Okay, I'm sorry, say that again?
We're providing the details.
So you would add detail sheet to that list?
To what's required, yeah, because it's being provided, right?
Yep, absolutely.
So then the next item is 6.3.3.4, it's a layout plan and profile, no plan and profile for the hammerhead.
This means there's basically no, you know, nothing to look at as far as how that hammerhead is going to be constructed? You know, even for a, a two-lot subdivision, you usually do get some kind of a profile.
In the application of stormwater, you'd have to give the dimensions of it, so they could figure out what the, the previous structure.
The, the proposed him, because it's, it's so small, the grading is what we're controlling, where the water's going to go, so you wouldn't do a profile for something that's small? I mean, you do a profile for a street, obviously, but not for something that, that's small.
Well, you mean, you know, why wouldn't you do one for the hammerhead when you do it for a common driveway, or you do it for a turnaround?
Because the hammerhead is so small, the grading of it is more important to make sure that the grading shows that the water's going in the direction that we show it. I mean, the, the profile wouldn't really show you anything of any importance, it's the proposed grading that you really want to look at when you do something that's small, make sure that the water is directed away from the cul-de-sac as we show it.
So there is going to be a cross-section for it?
We do have a cross-section.
There's one in the detail sheet right here.
Yeah.
And we, we had that on the original submission as well? That was on sheet four, the original submission, I just put it on them.
Are we comfortable, is the board comfortable without, without the plan and profile? Beyond what it's already shown.
Got to look at my own copy. So are the, is the construction of that shown, Paul?
Is the construction-
Yeah, I mean, how many inches of gravel bays, how many inches of, by two minutes, that's on here, okay.
It's on sheet five.
No, no, it's sheet five.
Can't see that far.
I can see it, I can see it.
Two-inch binder, inch and a half, inch and a half, finished.
Hammerhead cross-section detail, okay, sorted, yep, got it.
That's all set, it's just dimensionally is the road.
Okay.
Locate the 12-inch trees. They don't want to locate the 12-inch.
Yeah. I would think that's-
I would have no problem waiving that.
Yeah, right.
Landscape plan, no proposal landscape in the area of the cul-de-sac? No, hammerhead?
Yep.
You okay with that one? I'm not doing a yes or a no.
Oh, yeah, no.
I'm, I'm okay.
Okay. Erosion sedimentary, sedimentation control narrative plan?
Well, that's provided under the stormwater plan, right?
Okay.
Is the narrative provided?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, the observation pits, 6.3.3.1?
I think that's for this amount of development, not required, in my mind.
I have no problem with that either.
Yeah.
6.3.4.2, stormwater management system? Concom?
Yeah, we're getting that.
Yep.
That's approved.
Traffic circulation and safety?
Same, same comment, there's, there's just not enough going on here.
Homeowners agreement?
None.
No.
Aerial photo?
It's fine.
An as-built plan?
Again, if it's just the road, that's, as-built's going to concern itself with, I don't believe there's enough to justify it.
Yeah.
This is a private road, too, right?
You can make that a condition of your approval, but it is never going to be accepted out of town.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, good idea.
Design standards?
Well, that's the-
I think we've-
Kind of got it in the details.
Yeah, that's what we already talked about.
We pretty much agreed to that.
Okay, 13.7.3 utilities?
Yep.
14.7.4 erosion sedimentation control?
We have that in the Concom submission.
Street trees?
No.
And project review thing?
Not if, there's nothing to be reviewed.
I think the only thing that you'd be reviewing, if you reviewed, if you did review something, would be the construction of the, of the hammerhead.
Right.
Where it is got a support, you know, a fire truck, you might want to make sure that it is being constructed.
But it's a private, it's a private way, right?
It is, but a fire engine's still going to go down there.
Yeah, 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 no question.
It wouldn't be a huge amount to review that.
Paul, for something like this, would you typically go on-site at, at a couple of different times and see that it was proceeding according to your documents?
For something like this, we would, because, well, we'd be staking out the house, and we'd be grading the site, as well as the septic system.
Yep.
The Conservation Commission will want an as-built plan as well.
Okay, but that's, that's layout as opposed to construction.
Yeah.
Right. Do you do a civil, does anybody do a civil analysis of the underlayment of the pavement, for example, does, you know, what, what kind of control is there over?
That as well, we, we have test pits with the septic system there, and also the soils are pretty consistent, it's a glacial till, and typically what you do is remove the lumen subsoil, and maybe, maybe a foot of the till and replace that with a gravel and a graded mix that we show in the cross-section, because there's, there's already a driveway into the site.
Mm-hmm.
So we're, we're in essence expanding that.
Right.
And we would also lay out the hammerhead, so it meets the ratings for the emergency vehicles.
You could ask for a civil analysis of the condition.
Compaction tests?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know how serious it, it typically gets for something like, you know, this minor, I guess, what's the precedent?
Well, I mean, I think it's further to the common driveways.
Yeah.
That you've had, which you, you know, you do have, you know, inspection on the common driveways.
Okay.
I think we got a detail that says, what, four inches in asphalt? Four?
No, it's, it's five. Two-inch binder course, inch and a half, inch and a half. Fifteen-inch gravel subbase.
That's something different than our common driveway.
That's right. Your standards for that?
Yeah, I mean, it is a common driveway, essentially.
Also, we did that to support the emergency vehicles. We wouldn't build a driveway to those things necessarily, but-
We have something to look at, we have a motion to grant the waivers that we just talked about.
So we're not, no inspection on the road, just so I know what, what you're talking about.
Okay, I didn't think we agreed to that.
No, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's right, I think we should inspect the road. That, that, that's kind of my feeling, is that it's the common driveway, it's what the fire truck's going to be on, so we need to make sure it gets built. I mean, we should follow the same level of-
Yeah, I, I think so.
We're changing the way we're required to, to public safety and make sense, I guess.
I don't think it's going to be a mandatory thing to do, but we should do it.
Inspections. You would use them for-
Bill, can I make a suggestion? Sure. If Amory Associates did this, can they be the person who review, because he's familiar with the entire site, who's the town's consulting engineer, I mean, to review that aspect?
That is typically the way we would do it.
That would, I mean, that was part of the reason that we went into the joint reviews.
Yeah.
Because he's already spent a lot of time and energy, and he knows the site particularly, so we don't have any objection to him reviewing that and reporting on that.
Is he also going to go out to review the gradings and make sure that they're in?
Yes.
I mean-
I'm also used to, I mean, that's why he's suggesting we use the same consultant.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Then you, you should report both to the planning board and the Concom. Any other thing on the waivers? Do I have a motion to, to grant as modified, there is, and we're discussing?
Right, as modified, right, so that means we, we're accepting all of them, we accept the appendix A, section 4.1, project fee, project review fee?
Yeah.
With the addition that we're going to get a commitment to forward the stormwater development plans from the Concom.
Right.
I think that's what we basically agree up to.
So that's in the form of a motion?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Ah, yeah.
So you have all that, Karen? All those moves and-
I know she was following.
Moves and rearrangements.
And then on that, she corrects her grammar when she types it.
God bless.
Do we have a motion, any other motions?
Well, we had kind of talked about that a little bit, and I thought you were, you thought the board wasn't going to be ready for that tonight?
Yeah.
But maybe you want to talk about some draft conditions that we could put into-
Yeah, thanks, so what I'd like to do is, is, just for your information, is come back up, go through, just kind of just talk through what the conditions are.
Okay.
Then formally come back up and vote, and then, and then we go from there.
Fair enough.
I think one that we've talked about so far, talked about is the, that would be two lots only, no further subdivision.
Correct.
Yep.
I guess that the hammerhead, the hammerhead's going to be privately maintained, we're not going to-
Right.
The whole, the whole road-
Right.
Is, is a private way, right?
Yeah, correct.
Not just the hammerhead.
Yeah, right. What other conditions do we need?
I don't know if we need a condition on the Concom, but we obviously need the Concom to, to actually approve the stormwater plan and all that.
Yeah, for the stormwater per-
Bigid upon, yes.
Yeah.
I think that will be important to see, because there probably will be some maintenance with this stormwater system, and I think, you know, it's important to get that in there, no matter what board winds up, you know, putting it in approval, but just to make sure there's something in there.
So that's a good point, it'll also, we need DPW's approval of the, the fire hydrant, the connection, the water connection for the town, from the town.
That would be in a memo from the water department.
Well, I think we, we modified our subdivisions to show that it's going to be a type A, something, something yellow fire hydrant.
Yeah.
So I don't remember what, that, that particular hydrant model.
Yeah, you can pull that out and put that in your condition to make sure that's what you get.
The, um, water department is also looking for cement lined ductile iron pipe. Is that a, a provision for this construction as well?
I don't think it's really gonna come into play.
You do? Okay, so that's, that's what you're using?
Ductile iron.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
So you're gonna have to extend that, that line.
That's gonna be in the regs, right, region cement lined ductile iron.
Good.
I thought you were saying you could, you could have the, the service go, you know, right to the existing service in Colonel Mansfield?
Well, there's, there's an existing main. We're gonna extend it if need be to put the hydrant in. And if we have to extend it, the material we'll use is cement lined ductile iron pipe for both the main and the section of the six-inch pipe going to the hydrant.
So for any work. I, I have a question too, now that we've already approved the, uh, approved this, um, waiver, excuse me, looking for a word. Approved the waivers. Um, draft homeowners agreement. I mean, there is common driveway to be maintained. I guess the drainage is not shared between the two homeowners, so it would not make a terrific amount of sense to, to do it for the stormwater. But what about the maintenance for the road? I mean, if these, if these homes aren't owned by the same family at some point in time, wouldn't you need at least a, a, a minor homeowners agreement for that?
Yeah, I mean, there's some very simple formats that the planning board has that, you know, we've kind of distributed them among all the attorneys in town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there, you know, shouldn't be any problem with taking something like that and just, you know, probably take, you know, I don't know how much time, but it wouldn't be much time to modify.
You don't have any objection to having a homeowners agreement for, for the maintenance of the, uh...
Okay, if I can say, in, in your stormwater bylaw, there's, there's a requirement for the maintenance of the stormwater management system, and that's all part and parcel of the stormwater permit. That's all spelled out in the stormwater permit documents. There's, there's no new drainage structures for the Hammerhead.
Right.
That cross-section show is gonna be super elevated to slope down into the woods.
Yep.
And from there around the septic system is a bio-retention area, which has to be maintained by the owner of that lot with the, with the stormwater permit.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that.
I think Bob's talking about the road.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking the road, you know.
Not, not the stormwater.
Having lived for a long time on a, on a common driveway shared by six families, um, I'd, I'd wanna know who's responsible for plowing it and to what degree and things, you know, things like that or repair.
Well, if you look at the plan, there's, there's somewhere coming off the end of Colonel Mansfield Drive now goes up to the house to the right. So I wouldn't think the town plows your driveway, no.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the two...
What you're talking about, that's one of the two homeowners.
People who own those properties, right.
Well, we, we wanna make sure the road is maintained, so when the fire truck comes up there, he's not falling in, you know, a, a deep hole or something like that, so... And I think what Bob's just saying is that there should be an agreement that the two lots...
Yeah, we'll, we'll put together homeowners association that has to for maintenance and repair of the road.
That's, that's all you would need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It can be one page.
And I think other than that, we got, I can't think of anything else that we need other than pretty much our standards. No idling trucks, no starting before seven o'clock.
Do we need to say any of this other stuff like it's underground service and all that, or is it good enough to be on the plans?
It should be good enough that it's in the plans.
Okay.
So well, how long will it take to get all of, of those in draft form now?
Not very long, assuming, um, not very long. So we had planned to continue this to June 12th. May 22nd, you're out till about, uh, 10 o'clock from 7:30.
What have I got on the 22nd?
You've got Marion Road accessory dwelling, site plan waiver for moving the mossing shed, 50 Country Way definitive plan, 50 Country Way, uh, mixed-use special permit.
Is Richard's not being here? Is that one of the times he couldn't be at the, be present?
On the 22nd?
Yeah.
No, he can be present on the 22nd.
Oh, okay, so we, we have a full board on the 22nd.
They have a full board on the 22nd.
All right.
Yeah, you can do this one with as few as three people, but...
Right, that's what it is.
The opposite may want you to have more than that.
Yeah.
Is there any possibility you do this on the 22nd? I promise I won't ask any questions. Just looking to get on the construction. Craig's on, Craig and his wife are living in Avalon. They'd like to get down to Colonel Mansfield.
Okay, I don't know what time you wanna put it on. You have 50 Country Way mixed-use special permit at nine, and I think you were assuming that that would probably go for an hour.
Yeah.
Unless you wanna put this on at, well, actually, we, we just got a new set of plans on that today, so I think they're gonna wanna go ahead on the 22nd.
50 Country Way.
Can we come in at, can we come in at seven o'clock and get it done?
Absolutely, from our standpoint.
The board's staying on one?
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
That's okay.
Shit, look. Yeah, that looks okay.
Okay. If we do all the work ahead of time, we can get that done real quick. Okay, so we'll put it at seven o'clock?
Okay, that sounds good, and we'll get the plans sooner rather than later, so we don't have to worry about them, we don't have to hassle anybody about them and vice versa.
We'll hassle you, you'll have them in the morning.
Will we have the Concom decision by then too?
The order, order conditions?
I don't have the order conditions.
Oh, be conditioned of this. They'll, they'll vote it that night and should sign it the night prior.
So on the 21st?
Good.
Okay.
On behalf of the office, really thank you for the board's, you know, expediting this and, you know, accommodating.
It's a good thing.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do we need anything?
No.
Oh, yeah, you need a motion to continue to the 22nd and 7:00.
Yeah, all right.
So, um...
A motion to continue to the 22nd at 7:00, but the time to file of?
Uh, let's see, the time to file of... Where do I have this on here? It's June 26th, so that's fine.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you got, you got between now and the 22nd to figure out if you really want him living next door to you.
That's why I leave all the trees.
I was looking for a big wall.
At least a moat.
So we don't need a motion.
No, we need a motion to continue to the 22nd.
Yeah, second.
Okay, second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we sort of missed that piece of it.
So the next item on the agenda is the continuation of public hearing accessory dwelling special permit for 75 Moreland.
Um, can I just make one little comment on this?
Sure.
Um, this was an interesting one because this was the first one that had a lot of drainage going on outside of Concom jurisdiction.
Yes.
And the idea when we had all this kind of mutual working together and interdepartmental cooperation, all this good stuff. The idea was that we would kind of readily share information back and forth, and I really haven't figured out quite how to achieve that. So that's, that's not happening right now.
Would facilitate it if I talked to either Frank or, and or Pat?
Yeah, maybe Frank, like a chairman to chairman thing would be good if that's, you know, if you are okay with that.
I'm very okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, so I said, I started to say the continue, we get to continue public hearing for 75 Moreland Road. I think the applicant has agreed to a continuation on that?
Yes, they have, and we have a motion.
Okay, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the accessory dwelling special permit, public hearing for 75 Moreland Road until June 26th, 2014 at 7:30 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One more thing on the information sharing with the stormwater. I think another thing that should be happening is that the applicants should be giving us a copy of what they're filing. And that was just, you know, really, really like pulling teeth to try to get, and we, you know, didn't get until the 11 hour.
That'd do a lot of confusion.
So I don't know if we need to put something in, in the regs, but, um, yeah, I think somehow if the board wants to be kind of a equal partner in this whole process, you need to really, you know, make that clear to the engineers that, you know, that you're gonna ask them for that.
Does that get us though into a, well, I mean, you're obviously right, we, we need to have that information, but once we have it, then do we have to review it? Of course. So then you, then you're back to two boards reviewing the same material.
I don't think you, you have to review it. I think it's a question of just staying informed, knowing what's going on, making sure if they're saying that they are covering the stormwater in the road, that, that that's really the case. And, you know, nine times out of 10, it's gonna be, but, you know, I mean, this is a big money-making business and everyone wants to cut corners. And on our side, we're kind of stretched pretty thin too, so it's really easy for stuff to just get by us. And I put myself in that category too. Um, you know, I don't wanna pick on conservation or any other department. I think it's just a question of kind of being, um, like, be sort of a due diligence kind of thing.
Sure. So I'm just...
I'm gonna add to your workload, cause I don't...
No, but if this is...
It's not that.
If this is a coordinated review between the Concom and the planning board with a single engineer hired to do it, then simultaneously, we ought to get whatever report he's sending to the Concom.
Well, the engineer's been very cooperative with, you know, agreeing that he'll give us the reports. The problem was getting the application in the first place. Um, we couldn't get it from the engineer. Concom, you know, only had one copy, which they loaned us, but, you know, it's...
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta kind of give it back at the end of the day and, you know.
I, I think you're right. I mean, we should, we should get it. What we do with it, I guess, is the next question, but we should definitely get it.
It's either, either you get two sets of app, two copies of the application, or you do parallel silo review, right? Which is cheaper, right? Probably a copy of the application.
I would think so. I would think so. So anyway, I just hope that next time around, everyone's feeling in a, you know, more cooperative, you know, frame, frame lines, so, um, anyway.
That brings us to 8:35, which is endorsement flexible open space subdivision, regiment Studley Farm. Your timing is superb.
Waiting for my team, they must be hockey fans, I guess.
Is there a score?
Um, zero, zero.
That's better than Tuesday night.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're on their way?
Yes, they are.
We have county?
Two copies of the Colonel Mansfield, I have two copies and nothing for...
Oh, okay.
Do we need anything to beg on the subject?
No.
Just the open...
Okay.
No.
I was just, I didn't wanna make sure I was...
Okay.
It's just a motion.
I move to approve the Situate Planning Board minutes of April 24th, 2014, and the Situate Planning Board minutes of April 10th, 2014.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And planner report?
As everybody knows, the articles were approved by the attorney general, which is great. The coastal, um, I think it's called the coastal management officer position has been advertised. And, um, I talked to Tricia about putting something on the planners listserv, so we might get someone with a great, um, professional, um, approach, either planning or some similar approach. Because there are a lot of consultants that look at that and so on, and she was, she was very comfortable with doing that, so it's, you know, gone out on that listserv. If there's anybody that, um, any of you know that's a consultant or has expertise in coastal, coastal issues, it might be a really interesting job for someone. I mean, this is sort of round zero for coastal, coastal situations.
I would think so.
No budget.
Indeed.
The other thing to mention is that the MBTA property seems like it's gotten a lot of, of interest. We've had maybe a half dozen phone calls from different potential developers who may be submitting something. There's going to be a briefing on the MBTA parking lot next Wednesday at 10:00 and, um, you know, it'll be interesting to see who shows up at that. That's it.
What about economic development meeting on the 22nd?
Oh, okay, yeah, that's, thank you. Um, the economic development study, um, planners felt that they wanted to get some public input to tweak some of the recommendations and, um, you know, really develop recommendations to carry out the goals of the study. So they're having a public meeting on May 20th. It's at the Harbor Community Building, the former, formerly known as Pier 44. And that's at, um, geez, I think it's at 6:00. I can check that time and send something out to you, but I think you already got some, um, some flyers on that. I think it's 6:00 to 8:30.
I think it is.
Yeah. If you're interested in the economy of Situate and what makes it tick, that's a good thing to go to.
It's the 20th, you said?
Yeah, May 20th.
Uh, I have no liaison reports. Anyone? Your team here?
We're waiting for Mr. Watzke. He's, he said he was a couple of minutes away.
Sounds good to me. You wanna start the discussion? Is there a particular reason why you're here? Something you're...
Is there a reason why I'm here?
Yeah.
Yes, I was interested in the zoning initiatives.
Oh, okay, cause I gotta say, if it was something other than that, then we would see if we could...
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, Bob?
Yes.
Oh, Bob, Bob V?
Yes.
Um, did you get a chance to do anything with the different towns and their, and their zoning?
I haven't had a chance to do that. Laura, I did, as you recall, a little bit of research, probably when, two years ago now. We, we were starting to talk about this, and I've got that file around, and I do know that there are towns that have FAR regulations in place. One of them that comes to mind is Wellesley. Uh, I don't know who else at this point I could certainly find out.
I think Cohasset does.
Do they?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
At least some.
It's within an area, I think.
It might be in the business zone or something. I, I forget.
Or the historic districts.
Seeing an FAR requirement somewhere.
Yeah.
I didn't wanna step on your toes if you had already done something.
No, I have not. I, I have been remiss, but it's certainly preaching to the choir that we should be doing something or thinking, thinking about this in my, in my, from my point of view.
I, um, contacted a couple of towns. I didn't get all the information back. I got some back, so, um, you know, if you wanna...
Yeah, that's great. I keep thinking I'm gonna, I'm gonna get back on that, uh, thought process and trail, but haven't done it. Oh, good for you.
Lucky, I guess.
Same, same way.
Kind of, you know, kind of a mixture of, of, um, information.
Yeah, but it's, it's interesting. So Cohasset has a footprint, but not an FAR.
Yeah, and Ducksbury seemed to have the same and, um, and Marshfield did also.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, I didn't put the percent in for, for Marshfield, but, um, and the way that height is measured is really different from town to town.
Yeah, so...
You can do one thing in one town and you can't do it in the next town over. You can do one thing in one town and you can't do it in the next town over. And then I added in that lot shape factor because.
Yeah, that's something we've talked about too.
Yeah, when you first got the plans for White Ash Farm, they had the rat tails, and that was something that you were all thinking about.
Yep. That's interesting. Perimeter.
Perimeter divided by.
Divided by area cannot exceed 22. I, I'd have to do some math and take a look at a lot and see, see what that gives you actually.
Have to integrate under the curve there, Bob.
Actually, they took 20 and 24, and guessed an average.
I never, never, never liked calculus.
Gee, you're supposed to use it every day, isn't that what they said?
No.
Oh, all right. That was what they told me when I took Latin.
Who are they? Right, right. Interesting, yeah, okay. So, nobody's got an actual FAR.
FAR requirement, maybe I was wrong.
I couldn't find it. This was all I could find.
I thought what Bob said was what I remembered, but it's been a while since I looked at it, that they had it in a particular district or two.
Oh, I, this was, this was residential that I was focusing on. I didn't really look at business because that was, you know, really different.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember which district.
So, I think, yeah, I think they have, um, a mixed-use district, something like what we have, and I think they have it in that.
Okay, maybe that was it.
Yeah, we should, we should certainly pursue this, and I'm in total agreement.
I think this is about the only way we're gonna be able to address the rat tails as well as.
Yeah, that was a good point.
Right, right. Unfortunately, it's a little bit like the barn door and the horse, but.
There's still a lot of horses in there.
Yeah, exactly. There's a few horses that haven't escaped yet.
Yeah.
Just, just let me give them the.
So, let me ask, well, what? So, is it agree that we wanna go forward with FAR?
I would certainly like to do that.
How about the rest of the board?
I definitely would like to know what the, sort of, the lay of the land looks like, what it, sort of, what, you know, how you set that sort of limitation, you know, what the, sort of, the pros and the cons are, so, I think we should evaluate it at a minimum. And I think Laura's right, in terms of the lot shape factor, we ought to address that rat tail design issue, you know.
Is this kinda like the haunters and so?
Yes.
Hmm.
Yeah, I think you can have a couple of workshops and, um, kick some ideas around and open it to the public, you know, invite different people from different parts of town, people that you know have had issues with this. Um, you know, you always get the developers and the attorneys and the engineers coming, um, and just see where it goes and see, you know, whether you think there's gonna be enough momentum behind it.
Do we have any comments from the public? Someone who's willingly donated, given up a graze for tonight?
Um, I'm, I'm just curious and interested, and, um, I think workshops would be a good idea, and, and hearing from more of the public about this, because it seems, I, I, you know, it sort of sneaks up when you went all sudden, it's happening in your backyard, and you're thinking, how is this kind of building happening? And it's sort of, I think, ruining a lot of what's beautiful about Situate, so that's why I was curious about it, and, um, I only have those kinds of anecdotal or personal feelings toward it, but it just seems like there should be some kind of, um, plan that benefits the whole town, not just the individual homeowner. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Elizabeth Petit, 172, when we posted her.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Tell her she's, she's just in time. Now that, now that she's standing rested, it's her turn.
Right at the moment, right at the moment. We just ended up skipping ahead a little bit, and so, it's sort of like my, my thoughts. And Laura has gone so.
You're the author of the letter?
Yes.
Okay.
I am.
Wanna talk to us about your letter?
Yeah, um, well, not just Elizabeth, I, I, I live at Three Roberts Drive in the old one, First Cliff. I've owned the house for about 17 years, uh, seven of which I've lived in, my husband and I, full-time. I'm, it's a long story. I'm originally from Southie, by way of New Jersey, from New Jersey back to Massachusetts, and, um, and we have been very concerned about the, um, the growth on the cliffs in terms of oversized homes on small lots. Uh, and Elizabeth and I were involved with something a few weeks ago on the zoning matter with some potential building on First Cliff, uh, and I understand, I'm a former prosecutor, I'm not admitted to Massachusetts, but I understand that legally, the zoning board had to uphold the petition because it fits within the four corners of the law. Um, but, we, it, we did some research and we looked into the master plan from 10 years ago, and we, in reading that, we realized that, um, the residents of Situate by and large were opposed to the mansionization of huge homes on small lots because they're just out of scale. And they are ruining, if you look at Second Cliff, Third Cliff, Cedar Point, Cedar Point, and parts of, um, you know, parts of, parts of First, that the whole character of the neighborhoods are changing. Now, one of these reasons is the soar. Before 2007, you didn't have that massive building because people couldn't do it because of the septic systems. So, as soon as that was eliminated, you saw all this building to these enormous homes on small lots. So, as a result of that, you know, um, and we talked about it, and we said, well, the only thing you can really do is change the zoning laws. And we do know that there have been other towns that have successfully done that, where you're talking about the scale of a home to the lot. And, and I did do some research, this is not my area of expertise at all, um, and I was fascinated by this. Down in Martha's Vineyard, in the town of Chilmark, last year, they passed an ordinance, and you'll love this, you cannot have a house bigger than 3,500 square feet on three acres of land. Think about that. I mean, so, I, you know, I looked at that, I know, obviously, we're not talking about something like that, um, and I'm, I'm familiar with the process. I, I know what we have to do to get it, you know, either the 10 votes, if you, the 10 signatures, if you wanna go to the annual town meeting, or the 100 signatures, if you wanna try to do a special town meeting, and, you know, amend the bylaw, and, and the meet, the public meetings that have to be ensued. Um, but my concern is, and the biggest hurdle, of course, is drafting the bylaws. I mean, that's the most difficult thing to do. How do you work it? How do you do it so it's not gonna be challenged legally? So, um, so we're, we're interested in doing that. We were thinking of reaching out to people, you know, in preservation, um, conservation, uh, the historical society, probably Dave Wall, uh, in, you know, in his group, and the senior group, and other groups that made me interested in this issue. And basically, eh, the way we would, um, present it would be a preservation, not a prevention. We're not trying to rent or rebuild, we're really trying to preserve the character of the neighborhood. Uh, so, that's where we are. Also was thinking of, because I'm of a certain age and I'm not really familiar with, uh, computers, and not that good at social media, um, contacting high school, and probably there are a number of students going into their senior year who are active in student council and things like that, that might be willing to work with us and do social media, media on this, you know, and, and with the idea of preserving the character of the cliffs in the areas around the, around the water, in the 10, you know, I guess it's A3 now, the A3 zones where it's 10,000 square feet. Um, so I was thinking of maybe tapping in to some of the students to see if they would be interested in getting on board with a college application, to say that they, you know, actively working to try to change the zoning laws. So, but I thought it might be a good idea to, what about you? So, that's why I wrote the letter. I don't know if you, the biggest help for us, at least for me, would be if you knew any, of any other towns that would have similar restrictions on the same type of lots. I haven't been able to zero that down.
I think Wellesley does. I know that, uh, that was one, now, I don't know that Wellesley is analogous to Situate in terms of its development density, uh, but they do have an FAR that speaks to residential development.
And, and talking about the scale of homes, the size of the lots, if you need, obviously, you need some kind of formula.
Yeah.
You know, like, 10,000 square feet, 2,500 square foot house.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have a house, my house is on, it's not a huge house on First Cliff, I have a house that's on maybe 11,000 square feet, and my house is about 2,300 square feet, and I have a six-bedroom, four-bedroom house. It's not a small house, but every inch of it, when it was built in 62, from the bottom to the top, has been used as residential space. So, there are ways of, you know, of building homes that you have enough space, families are smaller, and just in terms of conservation and ecological, you know, reasons, I mean, I, I think that we should be looking for smaller homes in terms of the environment larger, rather than huge homes that are going to use many more resources in terms of gas and space and all that stuff. Um, so, how does the board feel about doing this at all?
I think, just before you came in, we just, we'd been talking about FAR, and it was one of the things that's really been, we're seeing the impacts of FAR, or not having FAR, and versus, as well as in terms of lot sizing. It's become, I think, a pretty major issue in terms of what we're seeing. A lot, all the easy lane is gone.
Uh-huh.
So, they're getting very creative, and rightfully so, but they're getting very creative in terms of how they come back up and how things are developed, or how things are, are rehabbed.
Are you talking about developers or homeowners, or a combination of both?
Combination of both.
And, and, you know, certainly I understand, you know, the individual homeowner who is saying, hey, this is my property and I can do what I want. However, as we know, that's not true. There are zoning laws, there are conservation restrictions, there was, we, anyone that owned on the cliffs, like I said, since, until the last seven years, most people were prohibited from, from, from building big homes because they couldn't do it because of the septic systems. They, it was not, if someone had more than the 10,000 feet, yes, they could. Um, so you knew when you bought your house that you were gonna be limited to some degree, and for people in Situate that still are on septic, I'm sure that those limitations with the septic systems are still in effect. Um, and I understand the arguments, and I understand that it would be, you know, there'd probably be a lot of opposition, um, on the cliffs, but I don't think that that's necessarily true for people who don't live on the water. Um, I, I take yoga class and, you know, I've seen the yoga class and whatever else, and I'm the only one that has a house on the waterfront, and most of the people that I talk to are very turned off about the size of the homes, that, you know, when they walk and they wanna walk over and, and all they see are these huge homes, they can't see out to the water anymore. And then you have the issue where these poor people who have smaller homes, who, and a lot of them probably are older residents on the cliffs, who can't afford to make major changes, and they are completely dwarfed. I mean, you've got this little, you know, you've got a house this big and their light is affected, and I would imagine that they just didn't have the money or the energy to contest it, and, you know, to really battle it, if you're, you're an individual, you have to decide that you're gonna litigate this probably all the way up to the Supreme District Court, and that takes a lot of money, and that takes a lot of time, and a lot of people just aren't interested in doing that. So, I think, my feeling is that most of the people in town, except for the people in that area, would not be adverse to it. Um, I understand that realtors would be, developers would be, and some home, some homeowners. Um, and it is an issue, you know, I mean, since Elizabeth and I lived there, it isn't an issue that, you know, it, that doesn't affect me, because if I wanted to, I could certainly knock my house down, it could make it much taller than it is to have a better view, but that's not something I would ever do, nor would my husband, and, um, I'm hoping to leave this house to my children, and they feel the same way, very strongly, they love the area, and they, they're worried. They're worried about what's gonna ultimately happen. And up in First Cliff, there are a lot of older people who have bigger lots that can be subdivided, who have children who, I'm gonna have the resources to purchase the house. It's easier if they know they can sell for $3 million and, you know, and just leave. Uh, so, we know we're concerned about that also.
One thing I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure you, you are aware of, but when you're developing zoning, it makes sense to work closely with the planning board because you need their recommendation?
No, I understand that, I, and I, I understood that from reading the information on the, uh, Chilmark, that they said that they did talk to the planning board, and they had architects on board, and, you know, so that they would get the input from the planning board of the bylaws and things like that before you could, I, I.
Okay.
Because it, I think, that's where we're headed. We're looking to come back up, because I think that the devil is in the language.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, the campaign, I mean, we're preventing you from doing what you wanna do, the thrust of it has looked, we wanna preserve what we have, and it's beautiful, and this is how people felt 10 years ago, and unfortunately, the building continues, and before, it's too late. Uh, and the fear thing is really to do is to, you know, if we can get to the point where we can draft the zoning bylaws and, and let the town decide. If they say no, then that's the democratic process, and we've done what we can, and that's it.
Well, I, I would say that, I, I think, yeah, there's a difficult part in drafting the language and all of that, but the hard work is really in determining what parameters are really important in what particular areas, and although you may have an idea of what it ought to be, somebody, somebody right next to you is gonna have a different idea. And so, the, the important, I think, work in all of that is going to be to try to identify where these kinds of controls have been put in place, and what kind of success or lack of success they've, they've delivered, and even how people measure that success, right? I mean, it's, it, I mean, it's, it's sort of like everybody has an opinion on this, and they may, we may have, you know, 17,000 opinions when we're all said and done. So, it, it seems to me there needs to be some kind of, some kind of, uh, research and, and analysis that is, is sort of based on trying to accomplish these things in other places, and how, how that might translate into Situate, and, and whether the, the FAR is one number or another, is really more dependent upon what we're trying to accomplish and, and whether that will accomplish it or not. So, I, I mean, I, I think the challenge, it's certainly a challenge to write it all into the, into a zoning bylaw, but the more important thing is to figure out what it is you really want to try to accomplish collectively, right? And then try to write it into a zoning bylaw.
But some of these things were brought up in the town master plan, which Carol and I had read. These were recommendations that were made, I, I don't have my notes, um, but we did go through the master plan and find them, were any things taken from that plan and applied to zoning, because these were very, they were looking for those kinds of specific recommendations. So, um, I was curious if anything happened to that specifically, or if any of those recommendations were, did you try to implement them before?
Well, I think, I'll speak for having only been here for, for a few years, but, um, you know, a number of things that have come out of the master plan have actually been modified, adopted, I mean, the, the mixed-use development plans and all those other kinds of things. You know, those things have, some things have gotten rejected as well, so, this one in particular, I guess, I don't, I don't have a, a history on this particular one, but.
Yeah, I think the one thing that has happened that touches on what you're talking about is we did propose a zoning change that would have restricted and cut down the size of accessory dwellings, uh, which is sort of a development, um, you know, initiative that, that is starting to, to crop up more and more, it seems like, in town. Uh, and it was voted down in town meeting. Not that it wouldn't pass if it were presented again, and we hope to be able to do that. But we were also addressing at that time, or at least had in mind, a fairly difficult situation that had come to us on the abs, where the lots are 5,000 square feet.
Yeah.
So, you know, that becomes even more critical in terms of how, how much can you put on a 5,000 square? put on a 5,000 square foot lot. But we certainly have talked about FAR, in fact, a couple of years ago started to do some research on it, and I would look forward to sort of re-energizing that, that, that direction. And I think you do, you start by finding out who's, who's got similar regulations and reviewing them and seeing if they apply to Situate, or what pieces might apply to Situate, what might not. But I think there's a few, there's a few towns that we can, can look at and some, some definite, you know, research that needs to be done, but that can, can be done. There's nothing stopping us except time and, you know, energy constraints.
I know, I know, and I'm amazed, this is way past my bedtime. Other than Wellesley...
You barely scratched the surface here.
Other than Wellesley, is there another town that, I mean, I looked at Chilmark, I looked at Hingham, I looked at Cohasset, you know, I looked at all the towns, and it can be very complicated. I mean, after a while, you're just going, oh. And I looked at Plymouth, and I did look at another town down in, down the Cape, but it was, the town was so old and everything was so chopped up, I kind of lost the train. Is there, I mean, Wellesley, the Chilmark case had, had formulas that they used that you could probably reduce, and...
Yeah, so does, so does Wellesley. It's quite complicated.
And, you know, and, and that's, because that's what you really need to see, how, like you said, how, how did other people do it? How, and how does it work? Were there any challenges legally, you know, which I could do by, by Shepard, something called Shepardization, and I could do that, and I, I have that at home. But would you suggest us, like, forming a committee that would come back to you?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be great to get somebody else who can do some research instead of just Bob, you know. I would suggest you look at, you know, if, what we're really talking about are seacoast towns, so my suggestion would be up and down the coast, you know, including the North Shore, yeah.
If, if the board wants me to get involved with this, I can ask the planners' listserv for examples of residential FAR, and...
I'm sorry, I, I know this is going to sound stupid, FAR is what?
Floor area ratio.
Oh.
How many square feet of floor area your house can have relative to how many square feet of lot.
I think there also could be other approaches to it besides FAR, like, one of the things that we've been talking about a little bit is the height measurement.
Well, that, no, that's, as a matter of fact, the Chilmark case...
A number of things like that, that maybe we can talk about, you know, offline.
Yes, and, I mean, they were, I, I couldn't believe, I think the height regulation was 20 feet. I mean, it was incredible.
But the question is, to where? To the eaves, to the ridge?
Whatever it was, I was laughing. And, of course, that's a very wealthy, you know, you're talking about Martha's Vineyard, if you're talking about three acres, you can imagine how much land that they're talking about.
I can't imagine there's three acre parcels kicking around.
And maybe there's only 4,000 people in the town, but what had happened was, is that someone had had the audacity to build a 9,000 square foot house.
Yep.
And it loomed over everybody else, but it was allowed because there was nothing in the, the zoning bylaws that said they couldn't do it. And, of course, the rest of the residents said, well, we can't believe that someone would do something like that. Well, the person didn't care, obviously, and it was done.
We tried height on...
I think it was, it was lot coverage, wasn't it, with Cedar Point, when the people came in, or was it, was it having a different height for the coastal?
I think it was height.
I think you're right.
We came in and we were, we, we thought we had addressed what we thought was the problem, and that was the height in Cedar Point. And we came back up, spent some time on it, we talked with people at Cedar Point, and they basically told us no.
Yeah, well, it takes a lot of organization and reaching out to people.
I mean, it was literally, you know, you're from the government, we really don't need your help. I think that was...
You're taking our property rights away.
Yeah, exactly.
Devaluing our property. That's what we heard.
Well, you know, in all of those, as, you know, as someone who has invested money in a home, I mean, I can understand that, but the bottom line is that regulations happen all the time, and that, you know, for example, people who were in flood zones that weren't before, and that restricts their use of the property. And our conservation lands, that, you know, when they wanted, there was no such animal, and now it's restricted, and unfortunately, life isn't always fair, as we know. But again, it would be up to the town, and it would go to voters, and if, depending on how it was presented, I think that we might have a shot, but if we don't try, then nothing's going to happen.
Well, that's, that's for sure. You know, it, it is an open town meeting town, which is, makes for a very interesting dynamic.
Yeah, yeah.
You might have a better shot if it were a representative town meeting, you know, elected members only, a certain number, or city council government, you might have a better shot. But I agree, it needs to be tried and pursued, and it's absolutely a worthwhile effort.
But it's not going to be easy, you know, and, and my concern is, like you said, the concept, and then taking whatever concept that you have and putting it in bylaws that are going to be workable and stand up to a challenge in court, which is not an easy thing to do, I think, you know, because you have, with, even with the ratios, I mean, it's, you have, and, and what do you do if you do 2,500 square feet for a 10,000 square lot? You obviously need increments, you know, if someone has 11,000, or someone has 5,000 from the 10,000 mark to the 20,000 mark. So, but are, are you interested in us doing this, forming, like, getting some other people involved? I mean, is the planning board willing to work with us?
I'd say absolutely. I would want you to keep Laura informed of, you know...
Laura and I have, have dealt with other matters.
So you have, you have lines of communication established.
Yeah, we all...
It would be important to make sure, sort of, you were inclusive, that, that there were stakeholders at the table who had a voice, and this wasn't, unless what you want to do is present one opinion or one view, then if, if what you're trying to do is get sort of input from, from those who, who are in town, then I would say we need to get everybody's input, not just, you know, a select few people. It needs to be a broad sort of representation.
But isn't that happening? My feeling was more that we would, you know, work out whatever we thought would be a workable plan in terms of bylaw, and then we would have the open meetings for people to come and say yea and nay. Or you could, you could have a committee, you know, we do have an architect that lives on First Cliff, and he's more against it because it affects his business.
And developers.
And we have some develop, and, you know, we could get that feedback from them.
I think it'd be valuable, even before we had a public meeting, to sort of hear their perspectives, because I can't say I've got everybody's perspective.
No, you're...
And, and it would be useful to have that, but that's just my view.
As well as an understanding of how they got.
Yeah, why, why 2,500 square feet?
How did they get to where I am?
Why, you know, why, I mean, why not 3,000, why not, you know, 1,700?
Well, probably because of the way it looks on lot, you know.
But, but what does that mean, with the way it looks? I mean, it's, it's sort of a very subjective decision, right? So, so then, is there a way to make that a more objective decision? You know, it's, it's sort of like the statement, I know and I'll see it, right, and, and you can't kind of write that into the law, right?
That's not fair. Actually, yeah.
Well, no, it's, it's also, it's people's opinion of what looks right and what doesn't, right?
And I think, I think a way that, and Elizabeth and I did do this, we went around, and, you know, around First Cliff and Second Cliff, and we took the assessors, you can go on, you can get the assessors, all, all the information for every house in Situate, you have the square footage of the lot, you have the square footage of the home. So if you go, if you take a picture, and if you see a 10,000 square lot with a 4,000 square house, I mean, a picture does say, and then you go and you see a 2,200 square foot house on a $10,000, $10,000 square lot, the difference is amazing, because it's, you know, just visually, it's...
Right, so is 3,500 okay?
That's what I'm saying, I don't know.
Or is it 3,000?
I think there's going to be...
Is it 2,200? I mean, that's, that's, that's the debate we're, we're going to get into, so that's what we need to really think.
I think there's going to be a couple of really egregious examples out there.
Always will be.
And I think you, you want to see where those fall, you know, what's the lot coverage for those, and then...
Yes.
Look at what other towns are doing and what's considered reasonable, and see, you know, what would be knocked out, what wouldn't be knocked out, and...
And, and that would be like?
You might only be able to cut out the really egregious ones, but if you did that, you'd still be accomplishing a lot. But the board was talking about having, you know, some kind of workshops or, or something, and, you know, hopefully, they're still willing to do that, but then...
I think that's where we're headed.
Everything kind of comes through, through them, and they can reach out to these stakeholders and what have you, and, you know, but, yeah, I didn't mean to introduce something that was going to get us way, way off the schedule, so, I apologize for doing that.
I really appreciate this.
Yeah, but I mean, that's where we're headed. I think it's a concern that we've got, and I think we're, we're there, and I think we're, what we're looking to do is to gather information so that we understand why, what Wellesley is, and what Wellesley did, and how they got there, and Chilmark, and, and some of the other examples, and equally as well as the ones that failed, understand why they failed. But, I mean, that's where we're headed.
Okay, well, when, when is the next meeting?
Every two weeks.
We have a really, really booked agenda, so maybe we could work independently...
Yeah, you should coordinate.
And come up with some ideas, and then run it back through the board, and give some examples, you know, as long as, as it's, you know, not something that we really broadcast to the public, we can probably take some pictures and make a little, you know, a little booklet or something, and, you know, again, it's not something that would be going on the town website, but just to show, these are ones that would not make it at this ratio, these would make it at this ratio, and, you know, see where people want to set that ratio. And frankly, you know, with everything that, that I have to do, I could really use a lot of help doing this, so if there's a bunch of people that are available to go out and take some pictures of what you all consider terrible, then, you know, that would be great.
I would say in poor taste. I don't think I would, because the houses are beautiful. I mean, most of these homes are really beautiful. The homes are just too big for the lots.
Just the term for the floor area ratio, that's the only way...
That's all, I mean, no, I can't criticize the houses. I, it is, the houses are beautiful houses, they're just too big for the lots that they're on.
Yeah.
And that, it's scale. Well, that, it, okay, if Laura, if you could, I, I'll check on Wellesley and see what else I can do in my research to find other towns. I'll go up and down the, you know, the North Shore and come down.
Okay, because it's relatively simple for me to do that through this planners' listserv. I can just send out an email, and I should get some responses back from people.
I think that's the place to start.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, Elizabeth and I can, you know, take some pictures, I might bug them back for Monday, and maybe talk to some other people to see if we can form, get, you know, more of a formal committee.
Sounds good.
Are there other zoning initiatives you're going to speak about tonight, or is that our?
That's pretty much the one we're, we're working at, where we were.
Well, a piece of what Laura has on her sheet here is called Lot Shape Factor, and that, that's really kind of a, a little bit of a separate issue in that, in development, people have tried to sort of thread the needle in terms of getting enough lots on a parcel by having long, fairly useless strips of land to get, you know, the, the necessary area in a lot and that kind of stuff. So Lot Shape Area is really more intended to address that kind of thing. Not frontage, but, you know, it needs to be a buildable, it needs to be a rational, buildable lot, and if, you know, you add 5,000 or 10,000 square feet to the lot size by stretching a, you know, a 10-foot wide piece of property, you know, 400 feet, it doesn't have any real value for, for building a house on or anything like that, but it may get you over the hump to a 20,000 square foot lot or something, okay? So that's kind of a, it's a little bit different than, than kind of the issue you're talking about. So those are the two things I think we have on the list right now, and Bob had pointed out the accessory dwelling issue. We haven't really discussed that one yet.
So that's where we're headed. So if you pick up, gather your group, establish your group, and then do the research and work through Laura, then I think that Laura will be the common, the common point for both the board, okay?
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you for coming.
I had to watch the video.
You didn't keep going?
Huh?
Oh, you watched it?
Well, yeah, I, I watched it, it was on at 7:30. I did, I did save it just in case I came up here early.
I keep going, I don't get to see it till 11:30.
I won't tell you, but Ken Jennings is in tonight's, so, he's back, he's back, he's the town of the champions. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you. You got your team together now?
Yes.
We'll put you there.
Excellent.
Thank you for your patience.
Interesting conversation.
Business.
All right.
So where are we, Laura?
Okay, well, the applicants are here, and I think we're ready to endorse the definitive plan, but we are looking for a covenant?
Yep, we have the covenant signed by Front Property.
Okay. Usually get more than one copy by any chance. If, if you had it, we'd take it. If you don't, I don't think it's a deal breaker.
We just signed the original figuring that everybody, we signed an original, and then we take a copy.
Okay, that's, that's great.
Or take the original to go to the court, along with the, with the endorsed plans when we have the entire package.
Okay. Okay, so there were a number of things that had to be done before the plan could be endorsed in your decision, and those were taking off the walking trail easement that way back when there was going to be a walking trail, going back to the, the Litchfield Trail that was taken off a long time ago, that we would get a copy of the revised definitive flexible open space development plan, we got that. The Homeowners Association Agreement is something that we got on, I believe it was Tuesday, and there really has not been enough time for Town Council to review it. We have had some discussion about it, we know some things that we agree on, some things we don't agree on, but that is one thing that's kind of hanging out there. And then the final one was to have the applicant or their representative consult with the board of selectmen on their desire to accept the open space. And that discussion took place a couple of weeks ago, and we do have all the selectmen's signatures on the approval of acceptance of the deed, so I'm going to, you know, give them that paperwork tonight, and...
Is the Conservation Commission signed as well at this point?
I think two of them have original signatures, one of them has a photocopy, so we can figure out if you need another set of original signatures or not.
Should probably hit, oh, you need two, two set, original sets.
I think one of those is for the town.
That's fine. As long as there's one set that's got original signatures, that's fine, we can send that up to EEOEA for their final endorsement, and that'll be the one that gets recorded.
Okay, okay, great. So what we, we talked during the day about what to do about this Homeowners Association Agreement, and what we came up with, what, what I suggested and they were okay with was that the planning board endorsed the plan, you vote to endorse the plan, conditional on us hanging on to that endorsed plan until we get all the issues with the Homeowners Association documents worked out between Town Council and their attorney, and the Town Council is satisfied with it.
So that works?
It, it works, and the, the Homeowners Association document, the, the questions or concerns that Laura has expressed are really kind of technical in nature, that I'm sure will get squared away with Town Council. It's actually a document that has been part of the subdivision application for months and months, and we could have resolved this a long time ago if the Town Council had been asked to, to take a look at it. So we'll, we'll, we'll clean up that piece right now. I think that the document actually does all the things that you've asked it to do, and we'll just have Brandon Moss take a look at it and, and confirm that he's comfortable.
Okay.
So what Laura and I were talking about is we've got the covenant signed, we've got the selectmen having given their approval. If we can have the plans endorsed, we have the milars ready to go, and we don't have to wait for the planning board to have another meeting to endorse them, and as soon as we have, the, the Town Council give his thumbs up on the, on the Homeowners Association, we're ready to go and actually move forward to recording. It's going to take perhaps, perhaps a week or two to get the...
We have a motion.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay. Hearing none, I move to endorse the flexible open space definitive subdivision plan for Benjamin Studley Farm definitive subdivision at 214 Clack Road. Studley Farm definitive subdivision at 214 Clack Road. The planning board has received the covenant dated May 8, 2014, to secure the construction of the way and installation municipal services and will hold the signed milars and escrow in a lot area within the treasurer's office pending approval of the homeowners association... homeowners association agreements?
Documents.
Documents by town council.
Go second.
Second.
Oh, okay.
Hold up a favor.
Aye.
So here is the covenant that you want to sign, and I'll go and get my rally stamp.
I'm guessing? Yeah.
Going back.
Okay. I'll leave you the top spot. Because when they file litigation, they just take the top name.
How to become famous, even if you don't want to be.
That's the same deed that was in the title, so...
22 blocks.
Litigation.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. This is the only one, I guess.
What else do we need to do?
There's endorsement of the milar plans. I don't think Laura's handed those to me yet.
Don't worry, I can make money from that.
Okay. That's really the next step. And then I'm going to need to take this, which is the, the deed as, as it's been accepted by the selectmen and the conservation commission. I have to send it to the Secretary of Environmental Affairs for endorsement, and then my client sign it, and then it gets recorded.
Okay.
That's good.
I need one of those back.
Okay.
Okay, so now we have a big plan, we have a couple of pens, and there's a lot, a lot of signing to do.
Let's do it.
Give you the table?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right.
We can slide back.
That's right. Did it score in the game?
No scores, 0-0 after 2. My dog is sleeping after this. She's at the Corner Cafe in the north end watching us think.
Oh, okay.
I've actually got tickets for Saturday night, I couldn't believe.
Me too.
Yeah.
Katie was at game two.
Oh, really?
It was an awesome game.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is this the last thing we need to do before we close the...
This is a, in fact, we can, can we adjourn it in silence?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, so Bob's got a motion.
Second.
Hold up a favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned.